We lost one of our own in the past week. Mr. Johnny Cannon passed away last week. And just to think about him, I'd like to just have a little moment of silence if we could real quick. Thank you. Thank you. Our first item of business is going to be the approval of the May invoices. If everyone's had a chance to look them over, we'll take a motion for approval, please.
I'll make the motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Solsky.
Second.
Second by Ms. Mizell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion approved. I need approval of the May 10th, 28 minutes.
I'm making the motion.
If anyone's had a chance to look, no corrections. We'll take a motion. Motion by Ms. Mizell.
Second.
Second by Mr. Miffler. Don't take no well to get that one. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion is approved. Approval of the June agenda. Make a motion to approve the agenda, please.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Mr. Moran.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Smith. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion is approved. Consent agenda. We have three applications eligible for consent. The first one being FSP 2018-20, the Tevis property. It's a final subdivision platte to divide one five acre tract. Divide a one five acre tract leaving a 47.2 acre remaining tract. Is anyone here in opposition to this application? Speak against this application, of the Tevis application. If not, we'll take a motion for a consent on.
Mr. Chairman, I'm moved we approve FSP 2018-20.
Motion by Mr. Smith.
Second.
Second by Mr. Wiseman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion approved. Mr. Tevis, if you can sign your papers, please. Next application would be PSP 2018-21 and PDP 2018-22. South Town Homes Amerson Orchard Preliminary Subdivision Plat and Preliminary Development Plan for 117 town home units and associated lots. Is anyone here to speak against that application? The South Town Homes Amerson Orchard. Has anyone here to speak against that application? If not, we'll take a motion for a consent. That is with the one waiver that they do have to not create a burn.
I'll make a motion to approve PSP, or I'm sorry, PSP 2018-21 and PDP 2018-22.
Motion by Mr. Solsky. Second by Mr. Wiseman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion approved. The third one we have is FSP-2018-23. The Breen Gardner subdivision platte, final subdivision platte to divide one tract into three tracts, creating one 6.002 acre tract, a 16.706 acre tract, and a 6.3 acre tract. Is anyone here in opposition to that application? Okay, we'll hear that application now. Other than, other, well, that's okay. We're going to hear that application now, so. Other than that, that's all that was eligible for consent. So. Our next item of business be old business.
Yeah, that item is postponed.
Okay. Do you think anybody be hearing for that one, Matt?
There is some people.
We had gotten one phone call, so probably the issue may have been announced.
This is a PDP, PDP 2017-33 self-storage.
On Paris Pike.
On Paris Pike has been postponed. If you're here for that one, we won't be hearing it tonight.
Yep. I guess that's what you're here for, Mr. Wilson.
Well, not necessarily that particular issue, but it's an issue that concerns that same issue about drainage.
Okay.
The waters coming through the property. Waters coming through that property onto our property across the road.
I would say, I would say somebody our office.
Yeah, come.
Because it'll probably be better, you can talk to our engineer about the drainage. He will be in on my day, he's on vacation right now.
We've talked to him before.
You've talked to him before about it?
Matter of fact, this is not.
Yeah, this is not.
This is not a new issue.
Okay.
This is an ongoing issue.
This is something that I think that you guys are going to have to go to the office unless we hear that application, which we're not hearing it tonight, so. More than that, if you want any, you know, quick information, you're probably going to have to go to the office to hear it because we're not going to be listening to that application tonight.
One question.
Yes, sir.
When will this be on the agenda?
Next month. I guess it's off for next month, Matt?
I talked to somebody today, they do anticipate it being next month.
We'll make sure you get a notification out of it.
Okay.
Charlie, if they've postponed it twice, we either have to hear it next month?
No, but we've always just had a policy that you can get up to a third time and then we usually don't go beyond unless there's some, you know, really good reason for that.
More than likely, we'll hear it next month or it'll be withdrawn.
Should I get on the agenda with my own application?
No.
No, because you really don't have an application. You just need to talk to, you need to get with Ben at the office and make sure.
Okay.
Make, make your complaints on that drainage issue.
Spell out the issue.
Okay.
Okay.
And if I can help you, just give me a call.
All right.
All right. So our first, first application we'll be hearing is PDP 2018-19 Swords Road Sail Tower.
All right, so this is a preliminary development plan, 199 foot wireless communications tower located on a 10,000 square foot lease area. The proposed tower is going, the subject property would be 197 Swords Road. The zone district is A1 agricultural and all the surrounding zones are also A1 agricultural. Is it outpaged down? All right. In order to propose a new sail tower, the applicant needs to show that they made every attempt for co-location. The applicant did provide the necessary documentation for this as well as all other necessary documentation that's required by the zoning ordinance. Essentially, what the zoning ordinance requires is that the applicant looks, that looks and finds that there's no more suitable location reasonably available to provide service to the area, that they found no suitable towers or other existing tall structures for co-location that met requirements to provide adequate service to the area, and that the proposed tower will be able to accommodate three additional service providers, which they did show. Ah, there we go. All right. This is just an aerial view of the site. I can try and point out the approximate location of the, sorry, the laser's not working too well, but this is a, the approximate location of the proposed tower. So you can kind of see some of the surrounding structures and residences within the area. So these are the distances from the proposed tower. The residence on site would be 474 feet from the tower. The closest property line would be 217 feet, which does meet the required setback of 150 feet. The front property line would be 1,380 feet away and the rear property line would be 520 feet away. These are the other two closest residences to the tower. House number one is 529 feet away and house number two is 588 feet away. They are on the other side of Swords Road. I just thought that might be worth mentioning. So this is a detailed site plan of what the applicant is proposing. You can see the tower there in the middle. I'm sorry that the laser is not working and it's a little difficult to see. But it's a 10,000 square foot lease area. It'll be accessed by a 12-foot gravel access drive located in a 20-foot access and utility easement. They will be using the existing drive on the site. The applicant is proposing to meet all landscaping requirements, which is the six-foot evergreen trees planted in a staggered pattern and a 10-foot landscape buffer area around, around the lease area. They're also showing an eight-foot high chain link fence to enclose the site, which is required, and they're able to accommodate three additional service providers, which is also required. So with that, I am recommending approval with the following six conditions. You guys have any questions?
I do, we can. I got one for you.
Oh, okay, sure.
I think you said it's, our requirement is 150 foot setback?
Yep.
But the tower's 199.
Um, yeah, that's high. It's, so we have a 200 foot height setback, or 200 foot height maximum for the tower. But as far as the setbacks from the property lines are concerned, they just have to be 150 feet away and it's showing us 217 feet.
Why wouldn't we make that to be?
Further.
The same height as the tower from falling on anybody else. If it ever fell.
I, I can go back to that slide. It shows what the calculation is for that. So what they do is they divide the tower by two, so it's 199 foot tower, so that'd be 100 feet. And then the 50 foot comes from what, what the required setback is in the A1 zone. So that's where you get that 150 foot setback requirement.
I think it's also partly due, Mr. Pye, who mentioned this before, that the towers aren't designed to tip over. They're designed more to, you know, try to collapse in place if there is some sort of failure.
That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Pye?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. For the recorded record, my name is David Pye and. Again, it's a pleasure to appear before you again for the recorded record. My name is David Pye. I'm the principal with Pye Legal Group, PLLC, PO Box 369, Shepherdsville, Kentucky. And of course, I'm here this evening representing the applicant, Skyway Towers and Selco Partnership, DBA Verizon Wireless. Mr. Chairman, before I get started, could the chair, if it's not, if it's not too much out of order, make an inquiry as to whether there are any opponents here this evening? If there aren't, that will obviously have an effect on the length of my presentation.
This application is for a sail tower on Swords Road. Is anybody here to speak against this or have concerns with it? Okay, thank you.
Okay, good enough. Then we'll, then we'll go ahead, then we'll go ahead and proceed. I've, of course, distributed hearing reference binders for all of you just prior to the beginning of my presentation. And of course, I think also council has one and we've provided some to planning staff as well. Ultimately, of course, I'd like to say a word of thanks to your, to your planning staff before I get started. They've done their normal, very thorough review. We're gratified at their recommendation of approval and we're willing to accept the specifications that they've indicated in their staff report. I'd also like to introduce Darren and Bethany Dillow, who are here with me. They're, of course, our property owners and our lessors and will be the recipient of part of the benefit of this if the, if we're fortunate enough to receive your approval this evening. I also have Glenn Katz with me as our real estate valuation expert. And of course, you know, ultimately, we've, of course, waived confidentiality pursuant to the, to the Kentucky revised statutes in our initial filings, as is our normal course of business. And a copy of this presentation is included as an exhibit in the hearing reference binders that I've distributed. Of course, your planning staff hit the, hit the highlights associated with our site plan. This is engineered, this is engineered as a four-carrier tower and you can see the various setbacks that we've been able to achieve. That's not easy to do in a densely populated area like this, but we were able to achieve it in this instance. You should note that the nearest residence is, of course, located on our site parcel. It's 474 feet away. The nearest residence off the site parcel is over 500, is 529 feet from the proposed tower. So again, this is a 199 foot tower, including the lightning arrester, and we've been able to achieve, I think, some exemplary setbacks that go well beyond what your local regulations require. Our radio frequency need is documented at Tab B. And of course, that report was pre-filled and has been available for planning commission review and is, of course, is also included in your reference binders here, here this evening. Ultimately, there are no viable co-location alternatives in this vicinity. We documented that very carefully. And this, and this, and this tower, if, if constructed and approved by you, will provide major improvements in both capacity and coverage in this vicinity. Our site selection report is included at Exhibit M. It discusses some of the techniques and various properties that we looked at within the search area that was established for this site. Again, I'm trying to be expeditious here, Mr. Chairman, since I know we've been down this path before. And of course, our county tower map is included at Tab D. Property valuation issues are listed at Tab E. And of course, that's a report that's prepared by Glenn Katz, who's, who's here this evening. He has over 25 years of appraisal experience. I used to list all of his certifications. It's a list of letters about this long. Now I just shorthand indicate he holds every certification that is offered by the Appraisal Institute. He is also the current president of the Kentucky Chapter of the Appraisal Institute and is their former education chairman for over a decade. He finds that, based on his opinion, this type of facility has not and does not adversely influence the value of properties in the immediate or general area. Ultimately, it's our view that this would not be a valid grounds for disapproval of a cell tower since we're a utility. But it's an issue that is often raised in public hearing, so we like to try to deal with it on, on an upfront basis. Tower and foundation designs are included at Tab F. The geotechnical report is included at Tab E, including full soil and subsurface borings. Of course, this is not located in a floodplain, as documented at Tab A, in our B1 drawing. Tower height issues. This is a map that has not been filed previously, but is part of our presentation and is included at Tab G in your reference binder. There are currently 23 FCC registered and constructed towers in this county. There are no FCC registered or constructed towers that are shorter than this tower. 21 of the 23 are taller. Two are approximately the same height. The average height of towers in this county is over 279 feet. That's over 80 feet taller than our proposed tower. Now again, I'm not suggesting this is a short structure. It is not, because of course, it's, it's almost 200 feet high. But when compared to the many other facilities that this planning commission has reviewed and approved in the past, it is one of the shortest cell towers in your community. It's also worth noting that based on the height that we've been able to configure here, that aviation lighting is not required by the Federal Aviation Administration or the Kentucky Zoning Commission, so there'll be no flashing light associated with this facility. We've, of course, met all of your notice requirements and has filed proof of that with your variable and thorough planning staff. And I think we've, of course, reviewed the telecommunications law repeatedly in our prior applications. I won't go through all of the individual provisions, except to hit a few high points that I think are important. And that is that ultimately, a facility like this can only be turned down under the Federal Telecommunication Act and the federal cases interpreting that in the Sixth Circuit where we're located if substantial, if, based on substantial evidence. The fact that we meet your own regulations is, is an example of substantial evidence in favor of this application. The following items are not substantial evidence and, under federal law, as interpreted in federal case precedent, cannot serve as a basis for a cell tower disapproval. Lay opinion, unsupported opinion, expressions of concerns with aesthetics, claims that a tower is unsightly or that you don't want it in your backyard or near your home, cannot, under federal law, serve as a basis for a cell tower disapproval. And of course, the reason for that, as noted in the federal cases, is very strong. If you allowed that, then there would be no new cell towers because at least subjective opinion and precedent would take precedence over the mandate under the Telcom Act to accelerate the deployment of wireless communication services. Of course, also, we're a registered utility and, of course, issues involving alleged radiation exposure or health or environmental concerns are expressly prohibited in this proceeding, not only under federal law, but under KRS 10986 state law, which parrots that same federal provision. We've, of course, met all of your local regulations and, as I've mentioned, we, we're a registered utility and are viewed as a utility under state law. Now, I'm in the home stretch in, I think, one of my fastest presentations ever before this commission. And I think it's worth noting that Tab H, to help kind of remind us that these applications are different from conventional applications that come before you. Not just based on the fact that there's a different legal structure. It's we serve a different community purpose. We are a, we are the type of communication that serves this community. And providing high-quality service isn't just a matter of convenience. It's not just a matter of preference. It is quite literally a matter of life and death in many instances. At Tab H, there's a report from the Federal Communications Commission indicating that 70% of all emergency calls are now placed from wireless phones. Now, at Tab I, there's the latest version of what's referred to as the National Health Interview Study. Each year, a group of allied federal public health agencies, including the National Institutes for Health and the Centers for Disease Control, conduct the definitive study of how people communicate in this country. They have to do that in order to make sure that the public health inquiries and surveys that they're doing are based on a truly random sample, because they don't want to base public health decisions on surveys and phone surveys and communications techniques that might be biased. So, and I've watched these numbers climb every single year that I've practiced in this field. Last year, we crossed a couple of critical thresholds for the first time. As of June of last year, 52% of all adults live in households with only wireless phones. Over half. And over 60% of all children live in households exactly like that. Now, when you consider those statistics against the previous slide we talked about in which over 70% of all emergency calls are placed from wireless phones, it becomes all too vivid why it is that it's important that we provide high-quality, in-building service with adequate capacity that works first time, every time. Because if it doesn't, the results can be catastrophic for individuals and for communities. We've provided some statistics here on the phenomenal growth associated with wireless communications, which places a continuing obligation on us to do everything that we possibly can to provide the sort of service that this community has a right to expect from us as an FCC license holder. A copy of my presentation is included at Tab K. At this juncture, what I'd like to do is to introduce the hearing binder cumulatively as an exhibit in this proceeding, since I've been referring to it and since you've made reference to it. Also, copies of all of our previous filings in connection with this case, including our application and supplementary submissions as exhibits in this proceeding, as if read in full. Ultimately, this case, this site meets all of your requirements. That is not by accident. We take that obligation seriously and we work at it all the time. And it's, we do the very best job we can of meeting all of those setback criteria that are built into your code and maximizing setbacks beyond those requirements when we can, which we've been able to do in this instance. We hope that you'll approve this facility. I think it's exactly the type of wireless communications facility that you, that you should embrace as a means of providing the sort of communications infrastructure that the people of this community have a right to expect and which we very much want to provide. If there are any questions, either I or some of the able people who are here with me will be glad to try to answer them. And, Mr. Chairman, I think that's one of my quicker presentations in a scenario with opponents.
That's pretty fast. You've been here, I don't know how many times since I've been on this board. Seven, eight, nine times. I was trying to count them up today. Does anyone have any questions?
I got a couple.
I'll do it.
Uh, I don't know if you said it or not. I, I, you probably did, I just didn't hear it. But a monopole or a lattice tower?
This is a monopole.
A monopole, okay. And. Like I said, you've been here several, at least eight times, I think, that I counted, since I've been on this board. Is there any point in time that we could see that the poles will stop coming to Scott County? I mean, I know there's certain distances that they got to make.
Well, as the guy who's handling the cases, I would certainly hope not immediately.
Hope not.
No, no, in all seriousness. And that is a perfectly valid question and it's a question I get a lot. To be perfectly frank, no, I don't think so. Now, I will tell you that in my career, what I have seen is a definitive trend towards shorter towers. And I think that will continue. Because as we build networks that provide adequate coverage, then the challenge becomes to add enough capacity. So we have to sometimes split up those cells so they serve smaller areas. And of course, the other thing is, in some central city areas, what you're going to be seeing, and I don't know if you've encountered franchise issues on this yet, Mr. Bergens locally or whatever, but the so-called fifth generation wireless, in which we'll be deploying very small antennas on light poles and the like in cities that serve only very small areas, will help reduce the need for some new towers in central city areas. But ultimately, I think we'll still be doing this for quite a while. And if you think about it, from the statistics that I didn't go through, phenomenal growth associated with this, I mean, how many industries have to deal with growth rates of almost a third on an annual basis? In order to do that, you have to have the infrastructure in place. And it's, it takes a lot of money and a lot of time and effort to do it. So for, for the foreseeable future, for this community, there are still areas that need improved coverage as opposed to just capacity. We'll be back, for good or ill. Hopefully, I'll be the guy who gets to come.
I only had one more question. Will this help the wireless networking out in that area?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Not unless AT&amp;T chooses to co-locate on this. Because this is a Verizon cell tower site. That was one of your questions earlier.
You said on Tab G that there are 23, 23 towers in Scott County.
Mm-hmm.
But then on Tab D, maybe I just, I'm looking at two different things here. We've got a number of towers. What's, what's the difference in the two?
Uh, and it's a good question. The difference is, it's. The difference is, we listed some that have been permitted but not constructed on the other one. And we've just referenced the ones that have been constructed.
Okay. I'll tell you what.
And, of course, coming up with tower inventories, as we've seen in prior issues, is not always, is not an easy task, since there are some towers that aren't registered with the FCC. But we found, over a period of time, we've kind of settled that on that as being the best indicator of numbers and locations.
Is it possible, on the Tab G, shows all these towers, to show their broadcast, for lack of a better word, their capacity? So, we can see where, you know, if they do overlap, or if they don't, that type of thing?
I'll tell you, that'd be very difficult. And also, of course, remember, if you did that, it would just be for one carrier. And each carrier would have completely different maps. Because, of course, they're broadcasting to different elevations on those towers with different frequencies and different powers. If, you know, I can certainly, at some future time, ask our RF engineers, and if we're able to produce something like that, I'd be glad to tender it to your planning staff so that they could forward it to you for your consideration.
I mean, I'm just looking at this, and there isn't any other tires in that area. But, you know, some of these are relatively close. It looks like they would overlap at some point in time.
Well, let's keep in mind our goal. If we were going to, of course, I have some math grades in school to demonstrate why I'm not an engineer, but our goal here is to provide coverage, and to overlap slightly, but not too much. Because if we do, we interfere with our own system. And, of course, also, our challenge is, it's not just about coverage, it's also about capacity. So, we can't cover too big of an area. We have to make sure we cover a small enough area so that we don't overburden the site. So, whether we could provide coverage from some of these other sites or not might not answer the key question. That might also create capacity-ish problems at that location if we tried to cover too big of an area. Getting back to the question you were asking about, you know, are we done, when will we be done with towers? And if I'm talking too much, let me know. But my experience increasingly is, is that we're building sites, all sites improve coverage because you're closer to the homes that you're in, and that gives you better in-building coverage. But increasingly, what's driving these new facilities is the need for capacity. And we literally have scenarios in which we will take an area that's covered by one cell tower and have to build three sites to help replace that, because we have to shrink the area that's being served based on the growth of demand. So, even if we did the projection that you're requesting, and we'll certainly try to do that for you, Commissioner, it would not tell the capacity story. And the capacity story is what drives much of these deployments. And indeed, the need for capacity improvement is one of the justifications for this site tonight.
So, when you speak of capacity, are you talking about the number of units that it will support?
That's the old size-of-the-water-pipe scenario. And so, not only do we have more people using wireless devices, but we have multiple wireless devices for individuals, and the need, and the ways in which they use them are now gravitating toward streaming video and other stuff that is extremely, fills that pipe up very quickly. And what we have to try to avoid is scenarios in which that effectively blocks communications. So, many of the new sites that we're building and that I'm permitting are designed to help deal with that scenario. When those replacement ones are done, they are typically shorter than the original one because we're serving a smaller area. Thank you. Certainly.
I have one more, or one question, Mr. Pike. In past presentations, I think you've done or had some graphics of the tree-like cellphones. There are cell towers that look like trees versus monopoles. Is that a cost-effectiveness to go monopole versus tree? A, I don't think cell towers have ever been pretty, but a one-hundred-and-ninety-nine-foot tree might be a little prettier than a monopole. I've never seen a one-hundred-and-ninety-nine-foot tree either, but.
I will tell you a funny story before I answer that. In that one public hearing one time, I made the mistake in Ohio of referring to this as the most attractive type of cell tower. And I was quickly corrected by a commissioner who indicated, no, Mr. Pike, this would be the least unattractive of the available alternatives.
Exactly.
So, I've tried not to. Let me say this about that, as Richard Nixon would put it. Our stealth facility is an option, yes. But in order for a stealth facility to work, and when you read all the planning analysis of this, it has to be size-appropriate for what it is seeking to emulate. So, if we were building a seventy-foot cell tower, would that potentially make sense to be done as a tree? Correct. Yes. There are dwarf sequoias. It would be more noticeable, not less. The other thing to keep in mind, if you're looking at regulatory changes associated with this, is there is an inherent trade-off. Every time you make something stealth, you reduce the co-location potential associated with it, and you reduce its effectiveness. So, as an example, used to, communities would ask for flagpoles, in which you're mounting the antennas on the inside. Well, based on how the industry and the technology has progressed, we have so many antennas serving different spectrum, you know, different elements of the spectrum, that if we do one of those today, one company fills it all up. Which means, then, instead of having one facility serving four, you've got one facility serving one. Probably the most functional of them are the so-called tree alternatives. But, again, all that stuff that you put up there interferes with our signal and reduces the effectiveness of it. So, there's a very real trade-off. Now, I have done a couple of these near high-value historic assets and other stuff like that in other states, not in Kentucky. But I'm very, I think communities ought to look long and hard at that and look at the trade-offs associated with it before you make it a requirement.
But they wouldn't be one-hundred-and-ninety-nine feet tall, would they?
No.
Because, again, it would look awkward as well.
That's right. So, again, it needs to look like the thing it's seeking to emulate, and that means it has to be size-appropriate. The technical planning term is it would look stupid.
Thank you, Mr. Pike.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else have any questions?
On Tab A of your presentation, it talks about a survey from the National Health Interview.
Mm-hmm.
It's early release program from January to June 2017. So, I'm briefly reading through here, and it's, and I guess, in a brief summation, it really doesn't talk about the impact of health as it relates to the amount of cellphone towers in a particular area.
No, 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 that's, no, the point, this is a study of whether people are using landlines or cellphones. That's what this study's about. And, in fact, references to alleged health and other issues is prohibited under federal law in this proceeding. So, no, this is a study of how people in this country communicate, and that's important for those agencies, because, as an example, if you're the CDC and you're wanting to do a survey in order to determine, you know, how often are people washing their hands in order to get rid of, in order to avoid colds or the flu? You have to know that when you're conducting that phone survey, that you're getting a random sample. And if you just called landlines, as opposed to cellphones, you'd get some inherent bias built in right away, based on who you're reaching and who you're not reaching statistically.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Pike.
Thank you very much.
Now, we'll hear from the audience. As you come up, just state your name, address, please.
My name is Michael Markham, 340 Swords Road. Obviously, with what's been presented from a law point of view, what the board can do legally, federal law in terms of health issue, I think that's our biggest concern where we're at. We understand the need for public services, and we support that. Obviously, we use these services, right? I'm one of those households that doesn't have a landline, so I'm completely wireless. So, while I appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman, we didn't swear in.
Oh, we didn't swear in, did we?
So, if anyone else that's going to be speaking, if you could also stand, raise your right hand.
Okay.
Do you swear or affirm the statements you're going to make tonight to be the truth, to the best of your information and belief, including what you guys have already said?
I do.
Thank you all.
I sure missed that one, didn't I? Where you been?
So, resuming, so we certainly appreciate those services, and, but I guess, from an engineering point of view, I have some questions that eventually relate back to health. You know, our health, our, you know, our family's health. Obviously, I have children at home, and I'm concerned about these things. So, I'd like to know if they can provide any information as to how the FCC regulates the power output from this tower? How is it monitored so that, let's say, six months after the tower's in full operation, that somebody from an engineering configuration point of view actually outputs way more power than should be outputted and causes a health risk to my family? How is that regulated and monitored? It must be. If the federal law is prohibiting me for even bringing this health issue up before this board, then surely there are safeguards in place. I'd like to hear what those safeguards look like, number one. Number two, I'd like to know how does Verizon or any company that wants to place these cell towers, how do they determine the need? I think it was valid to ask for a map that shows we are going to lack bandwidth in a certain area, and we need to increase that bandwidth by adding additional towers. I would like to understand how they determine that and why. Part B to that is, why is that not part of the petition to put up a tower? It seems only right that we should understand what public need they're actually servicing. They could be, now, there must be a monetary reason. Of course, they wouldn't petition this board if there wasn't financial gain for them to do this. So, I'm not questioning the financial gain. But there may be underlying reasons that it's not really in the best public interest based on the engineering study. So, I think the public should be able to see there is a bandwidth lack in this area, and the only way to meet that lack is by adding this additional feature. I think those are reasonable requests. I don't know why they're not a normal part of the proceedings. But those are the points that I wanted to bring up, and I'll yield the floor back.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Sonia Connor. I live at 212 Swords Road. I think, according to the map, I'm house number two. Again, with the information that Mr. Pike presented to us, we don't really have a whole lot to say with the federal laws. But just wanted to voice my opinion about the health issues, that it could, you know.
We can't even listen to it.
But I know it's not even a concern at this point. But having information ahead of time, like you all, was presented to you all, that would have been nice if we had gotten that, just to get an idea of what our rights are or The gentleman before me pretty much hit on all the points that I have as far as information needed, so, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Is there anyone else?
Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is John Camilla. I thank you to ladies and gentlemen of the planning committee.
What's your address?
I'm at 292 Swords Road. I'm right across the street, neighboring these two folks that just spoke.
Thank you.
A couple of things I'd like to say is, one, when I received the letter from the lawyer about this thing, it actually was received in our household as a breath of fresh air. It was a real godsend. We own a property that is nearly as close to this tower as the others. We run a horse boarding facility and a bed and breakfast, and so we have a great deal of traffic coming through our property. A lot of people that are from the University of Kentucky, young people, horse rider people, and they all have smartphones. The number-one complaint that we get from people that come to our facility is that they don't get cellphone service in this pocket, and they don't get cellphone service in that pocket. If you look at the, if you look at the map of our area, there are no cell towers near us. And to add insult to injury, it's a very hilly area. So, not only are we far from the cellphone services, this kind of speaks to your thing, Mike. We're far from a tower, but we also have those hills interfering. So, there are dead pockets there. I know you can't listen to safety issues, and I'm, I don't, I think it's a safety issue to not have it there. We run horse shows in our facility. We have injuries to both humans and horses in those facilities. We need our cellphones to be able to call an emergency service. And if we have to move around, those are precious moments. So, from this neighbor's standpoint, we very much would appreciate the board passing this. We desperately need this service in that area. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Pike, you want to answer just two questions?
Sure. Well, first, I'm not going to respond on any of the FCC standard issues for obvious reasons. As for the need, we've prefiled an extensive report from Gordon Snyder, the RF engineer who's here, and it's been available for public inspection in this application file for, how many weeks?
Three or four.
Three or four weeks. And that is, of course, part of our normal filing, and it's, of course, been available for anyone to inspect, because we voluntarily waive confidentiality associated with all of our filings, because we think the public has a right to know. Thank you very much.
Mr. Pike, on that, on that one question, that first one he had, as far as, you can't discuss how the FCC regulate, or how they determine.
The FCC, I'm, I'm.
I know, it's a touchy thing.
It's a touchy thing. What I, what I, I will say the following. We are absolutely required under our FCC license to adhere to those provisions. If we don't, we risk losing that license, which is worth billions with a B dollars. And the FCC has testing procedures that we have to undergo associated with it.
And it's constant testing.
And it's, absolutely. And that's all I'm going to say on that, because this is preempted by the FCC.
I think that's enough. Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Does anyone else have any questions? Does anyone on the commission have any questions?
No one has any questions or more comments?
Let me ask the staff a question here. Last month on the Minersville, didn't we see a service area from that tower?
I don't believe we saw a service area. I think we saw a similar map to show all the towers that were, are within the county in a half-mile radius outside of the county, to show what areas have a tower. But I don't believe, Mr. Pike might be able to correct me, but I don't believe that we saw one with a service area as far as where the dead spots are, unless I am wrong in that, Mr. Pike, I don't believe so, yeah.
I thought, too, we saw a service area.
I think somewhere down the line, we've seen them before.
Yeah, I think we have, yeah.
I do remember part of the presentation was showing the red and green map that showed what the coverage would be. I think that might be what you're remembering, but he didn't do it for the whole county, it was just for that particular area.
Right, yeah.
Which I think that whole area was an entire dead spot, so he was just showing this, the service area.
And I might be, because we got the shorter version this time, as opposed to the longer version, which would have excluded that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Steve, did you have some? I know somebody else had some.
I did have one question. Emergency service, emergency services does not plan to have any, any equipment on this tower. I know they planned to put something on at the Minersville Tower for fire trucks and ambulances and.
We haven't received any inquiries from them regarding this site check, but.
No further discussion, we'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve PDP 2018-19 as presented.
Motion by Mr. Solsky.
My second.
Second by Ms. Mizell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion approved.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Mr. Pike, just as a matter of record, would it be possible to get this binder at our planning session? Because we get about half of what's in here at the planning session, and then turn around three days later and get the whole thing here. It just seems like a lot of waste of time and paper and money and, and maybe I'm, maybe we've got to legally, maybe legally can't be presented till tonight, but, you know, we've got that same thing Monday afternoon, and then. we've got that, that same thing Monday afternoon and then...
No, we could certainly request that in time for the workshop, which is the Monday before the meeting.
I tell you what, if, if someone will, at my advanced age, remind me of that in advance...
Takes a lot of reminders.
We'll let Charlie, at his advanced age, remind you at your advanced stage.
Between the two of us, we got half a chance of getting it done.
Exactly.
But no, if, that, that seems reasonable, and there's no, again, as long as somebody reminds me, okay, because it's not in the regs. If you remind me, I don't see any reason why we can't do that.
Thank you.
Certainly. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next application is gonna be PDP 2018-24 Sunbelt Rentals. Do what now? Oh, okay. Yeah, I didn't scratch that one, I'm sorry. I had that one, that was consistent. I'm sorry, correction, our first application would be FSP 2018-23, the Brim Gardner subdivision
This is a final subdivision plant to divide one tract into three tracts, creating one 6.002 acre tract, a 16.76 acre tract, and a 6.3 acre tract. It's located on Quality Drive. I can pull up the map for you here. It's gonna be located on the eastern side of Quality Drive, it's that whole site, sorry, I can't use the laser pointer, but it's gonna be that whole I-1 ESLI site, so that's just our environmentally sensitive light industrial zone. The surrounding zones are the I-1 ESLI, I-1 light industrial, I made a minor mistake on my PowerPoint, but it's B-1, R-1B, R-1C, and A-1, which is that railroad on the western portion of the lot. The whole site is located in the, in the Royal Springs Aquifer Recharge Area, which is why it's the environmentally sensitive light industrial zone. As far as the site is, or as far as the plot's concerned, it's meeting all of our requirements, however, there is one minor issue. The rear yard setback should be 25 feet, I believe it's showing 50 feet right now. The site statistics is showing the correct setback, so that'll just have to be adjusted before the final development plan is signed, or final subdivision plan is signed, sorry. There's really, there's only water and sewer service available to tracks three and four currently, all of track three and a portion of track four. Track five currently does not have water service, but they're planning to extend it. That's also the development plan we'll be hearing later on tonight is for track five. So with that, Steph is recommending approval of this final subdivision plant.
Does anyone have any questions for Michaela?
Um, yep. I think, I think y'all get a chance to speak out there.
Does anyone on the commission have any questions for Michaela, for Steph? Thank you, Michaela. Is the applicant here? Y'all wanna come up and speak on it? Come on up there, let me ask you a question real quick. State your name.
Ed Brungartner, I'm one of the three owners of that property.
And you're in agreeance with all the recommendations from staff?
Yes, yes. We work with you all, all through it, and everything's been fine.
That's all we need.
Okay.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you all.
Next be, yes, ma'am.
My name's Frances Ransome, and I live at 1337 Dorchester, just one street back. We'd like to know what kind of light industry's going in there. The letter stated that it would be an equipment rental. What's gonna happen with all that truck traffic and all the noise and the dust and everything that's gonna filter through ours? They'll be cutting through our subdivision? We have kids out there playing?
It's, well, the next application is for Sunbelt Rentals, and I can't imagine Sunbelt Rentals creating more traffic than what Johnson Controls Plan ever created back there in the first place.
Well, when the subdivision was built, they weren't really very productive back there.
That on, who, Johnson Controls?
Right.
Johnson Controls, that, that plant's been back there for a long time now.
The plant has been back there, but Johnson Control, it went out maybe 20 years ago or longer. I had a cousin that worked there and he only worked there 19 years.
That's the only reason they built that road back through there in the first place was to get people from going back through to Mount Vernon.
Right, so they didn't have to go down Showalter.
Yes, so...
But the roads just, it's not wide, it's not marked, you know, the traffic coming in and out, people cutting, there's two ways they can cut through the subdivision now. And I don't like none of it.
Yeah.
You know, I've lived there thirty-some years and what's it gonna do to our property values?
Yeah. I would think this would actually help your property values, in my opinion, I mean, at least you're getting something done there on a piece of property that's been stagnant for years. So that's just my opinion.
So what kind of light industry are we talking about?
It's an application.
Yeah, there's, there's actually gonna be another application. Yeah, there's going to be three separate tracts. There's only an application for one of the tracts to be developed currently, and it's actually an application tonight, so if you wanna move on to that application, I can present that as well, or I can start talking about it.
And as far as it being light industrial, that's been zoned for years that way, so that's not even an issue at this meeting tonight.
But it is an issue to the people that live there.
Well, there's nothing we can do about it because it's already done. I mean, there's nothing anybody can do about that tonight.
And I have one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
Where are these people supposed to shop that's moving in to, say, take these positions in these factories? We have Walmart.
That's, that's not even, that's not even something we can consider either. We're not here to consider where somebody's gonna shop, we're here to consider this application, that's all we're here to consider.
The employees that will be back, you know?
I don't see Sunbelt Rentals having 100 employees either. Sunbelt Rentals might employ 10 guys.
No, but our letter said there would be, was it three or four light industries? It was either three or four plus the rental.
Now, they're, they've only got, the application's only to divide that into three lots, so there's not, not gonna be no more than three lots there. So this is probably the engineer for that.
But make one clarification.
State your name, Ben.
That might help.
State your name.
Brent Combs, third grade engineering. This is a application just to divide it into three tracts for sale. So nobody's bought any of the tracts yet. Sunbelt Rental is looking to buy one of them, and they're gonna talk about what's gonna go on that track, but there's nothing planned for the other tracts right now. It's just simply to divide them, so they're up for sale.
And sell them.
Up for sale, yeah. And what will happen is if somebody buys one, then they have to come back here and explain what they're planning to do on that track.
I still don't like it.
If I might just throw one comment, the next time we do a comprehensive plan update, that's when you need to raise the question as to where these folks are gonna shop, because that's when they...
I would love to know that.
Yeah, because that's when they look at what our inventory of planned uses are, and if there's more need for commercial or industrial or resident, whatever it is, that's when they discuss that, then they recommend a map that shows where these things are gonna be and standards, and then that gets adopted. And then for the next five or so years, that's what governs. So this was actually governed by a plan, oh, I don't know, 20 years ago, because this has been light industrial for quite some time. But, but that's when you do that, and unfortunately, we just finished that process, so it'll be about four years before we get rolling on that again. But it's publicized and all, and please, I know they would love for you to volunteer to be a part of it.
Okay.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
But on the same thing, because we approve a new factory or a new retail store or a rental store, we can't say, well, you gotta also put in two groceries and a service station. That's not our responsibility.
Well, responsibility is...
Come back up to the microphone if you want to speak, please.
I'm just curious because we've got this growing town with all these people, you can shop at Walmart or you can go to Kroger.
That company has to have the want to bring, to come here, a Myers, a Target Superstore. We can't request that they have to wanna come here.
No, but can you make something favorable for them to even think about it?
There's property already been rezoned. There's probably, I would say, in the next two or three years, there's gonna be more stores pop up like Walmart, like Kroger.
Well, you know, also, at the holidays, it's shop local.
Yeah, I understand, I understand, I've been here all my life, I understand.
Me too, and it's just...
It's the same. Hopefully it'll, I don't know, sometimes you get people saying, we don't wanna be in another Lexington, so, I don't know. You gotta have, you gotta have the businesses wanna come here, so that's not our job to attract businesses, we're just here to make sure they do what they're supposed to do to get, get it zoned and get it, and on the property.
Who does attract them?
That, go to your city council, go to your fiscal court.
We'll do that.
Chamber of Commerce.
Chamber of Commerce, yes.
Because we really need more retail in the, in this area, you know, so that we don't have to go to Frankfurt or Lexington.
I don't wanna get off on this application too far, but thank you for your, thank you for that.
What's my fee?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Does anyone else wanna speak on it? If not, we'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to, are we voting on both or just the one?
No, just on the one.
I'll vote to approve FSP 2018-23 as presented.
Motion by Mr. Solsky.
Second.
Second by Ms. Mizell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Our next application would be PDP 2018-24 Sunbelt Rentals. Are you, you guys leaving? So you don't have any questions about the Sunbelt Rentals? Because I think you were the only ones that wanted to hear anything on it anyway.
It's going on the site that we were just discussing, so if you're interested in it.
Just a minute, Michaela. Charlie, since, since the only opposition left, can we make a motion for consent?
Motion for consent, yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to approve...
I would just like to bring up the, the point about the sidewalks. I don't know if you guys had discussed whether you were in favor of allowing the waiver or not. I think that was really the only major point on this application.
That was the only major thing, was the waiver.
So I don't know if you just wanna open up for discussion on that, or if you want me to review it, but...
Just do a quick review, real quick, Michaela.
Okay, sure. So this is a preliminary development plan to construct a 3,000 square foot office in a 9,000 square foot warehouse. It's located on Quality Drive, it's I-1 ESLI, environmentally sensitive light industrial. It's going to be on a 6.38, 38 acre tract, and there's one variance request to not provide sidewalks for pedestrian access along Quality Drive. This is the site. As far as the development plan's concerned, they're meeting all our setback and parking requirements, landscaping requirements, they're showing, they need to add five additional interior VUAA trees and one additional VUAA perimeter tree. They're also required to provide screening on that eastern portion, or eastern portion along the railroad. They're showing the buffer area and they say that the existing canopy will be sufficient, so that'll just need to be clarified or verified at the final development plan stage. They did not request a waiver for the VUAA landscaping, so we'll just wanna see that on the final development plan unless they request it tonight. This is just a view of Quality Drive to give you an idea of what you're looking at. On the left side of the screen is where all that residential development is. It does seem that internally they have sidewalks with, throughout that residential development. Along Quality Drive, there are no sidewalks, that's why they've requested the waiver. It is going to be industrial uses all along that eastern portion of Quality Drive, so whether that is going to attract pedestrian traffic or whether you want that to attract pedestrian traffic, I think is the discussion, and I think that the applicant is going to make that justification for you. That's really it. I, I recommend the approval of the preliminary development plan. I, I didn't recommend approval of the waiver, but staff is very, and I think that they probably have a strong argument either way, so I kind of left it up for the planning commission's discretion.
Why, why do you keep leaving?
Do you have questions?
Well, you gotta wait and let me ask. Does anyone on the commission have a question for Michaela? She's always in our arena.
I'm used to board of adjustment, they don't ask me too many.
No questions right now, Michaela.
Is the applicant here to speak?
Yes, good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to speak with you. My name is Leith Hermes, I'm here on behalf of AIG redevelopment, where the applicant will be the landowner of the property. This is a build to suit for Sunbelt Rentals, which is a high-valued client of ours. First of all, I wanted to thank the Michaela and the planning staff, they've been great to work with. The only issue here tonight is the sidewalk. I mean, generally speaking, if you look at the residential community that's adjacent to Quality Drive, their sidewalks don't even extend over to Quality Drive. And generally speaking, in terms of industrial parks, industrial parks do not have sidewalks. There are no sidewalks currently in front of Quality Drive. It's really not an issue for us in terms of whether putting the sidewalks in or not, it's more of a safety issue. They're gonna be a sidewalk to nowhere. So for, so as far as we're concerned, we just, we did not think that it was a reasonable request at this point, and so we would just ask for your consideration of granting our variance, and we're, we're very excited to move the project forward, and I've got representatives of Sunbelt here as well as the owners of the property, as well as our engineers, so if you have any questions, we're here to answer your questions tonight.
All the conditions of approval, y'all are good with all those?
Fine, no issues.
The sidewalk issue, here's where I'm at with it. Quality Drive stops there at the bypass.
Correct.
On the other side of bypass is a proposed entrance for a future farm on the other side, if I'm not correct, am I correct? That's gonna be an entrance to a subdivision, sooner or later.
At some point, sure.
So I would like to see the connectivity between the two subdivisions with sidewalks. That's the only reason I would like to see the sidewalk, because if, if you guys don't put the sidewalk in, the next two lots don't put sidewalks in, the city's gonna wind up having to pay to put those sidewalks in. So that's the only reason I'm saying I'd like to see the sidewalk.
Can we make it a condition of our approval that in the event sidewalks are required for the two or three lots closer to McClellan, that at that point, we would install the sidewalks?
Charlie?
Oh, oh, certainly, you could make that a condition.
Should, yeah, should sidewalks ever extend to that point, then they would be...
Happy to put them in.
Mr. Brim Gardner?
I, I, just one short question.
State your name.
I have Ed Brungartner. I have AAA storage there in the front, and it was never even brought up when I put my storage in.
See, that's where I was thinking, you don't have sidewalks in front of it though.
No, and it was never even brought up at the time, so it was kinda dead end right there on, end of the property.
That's just my two cents.
Some people think it's weird to bring sidewalks to McClellan, so...
That's just my two cents, Warren. Usually don't amount to much, but anybody else got any questions?
No.
Any comments on this?
I mean, how much foot traffic are you gonna have going to a rental facility?
Well, I just worry about the future with the connectivity between the two subdivisions.
I think it's easier to get it now done versus having to ask for it later.
It's been harder to get it later. Yeah. But if we put it in the variance to, have to have it done at some point in time down the road, then he was good with that.
I've had the storage business since 96, and, you know, people come once a month to pay their bills and stuff. I bet I can count on my hand how many people walked in. I've had people come in in bicycles occasionally, one guy, one customer, but walking, I can't, you know, it's just, so I'm not sure how many Sunbelt would have walking in. I can't really picture that, so, I mean, something to think about.
Thank you. Anybody else got any comments? If there's no other comments, we need to take a motion.
Are we gonna consent on this?
Uh, well, we're just mode on it, just like normal, since we done heard it, we're just vote on it.
And are we looking for a vote with sidewalks or without?
Well, that's up to you, how you wanna make your motion.
All right. I think we should put the note on there, shouldn't, shouldn't have it required. I mean, should, should sidewalks ever...
It's a safe way.
Uh?
It's a safe way to do it. They may never get built, but that's a safe way to do it, to guarantee that if it does, you know?
Yeah, if sidewalks ever...
Yeah, if sidewalks ever were needed in that area, they could be, they would be put in.
So you would take out variance number one, cause they're asking for a variance to not provide sidewalks, and you would actually add it as a condition?
As a condition, yeah.
But a condition that if, is that what you would do, put a condition?
Eight, eight, should sidewalks ever...
Well, should, I suppose the way you would do that is perhaps if sidewalks, sidewalks are required for, what is it, track four and three? Uh, cause you're not gonna get it on... On the other two that are being created, if they're required there, then this has to join up and you have to have all three.
Here's an issue I have with that. So I know Rob's done after this year, who knows who's gonna be here tomorrow. He added in number eight, and let's say those other two properties get built on, and who's gonna, who's gonna look, Charlie, you ain't gonna be here, you know what I'm saying?
Well, I'm gonna be here forever, so it's alright. Well, there...
Yeah, you won't.
I mean, show me evidence of the contrary. No, the, the only way that that has a legitimate is, well, primarily, they then put that in the file on the next two lots, so that there's a note there that if that happens, then this one comes back. Another way may well be, they've got all sorts of layers on their GIS. They may be able to make notes there. I don't, I don't know about that.
Cause I'm just thinking in five years, another applicant comes and they say, you know, "We wanna buy it for," who knows, they're selling whatever trinkets. You know, if, if none of us are here, let's say, oh, well, heck, we're that, they're, they're...
And, and all that's true. I mean, that's literally true. And, and the only reason why you would consider doing this is if it isn't necessarily appropriate now to have it done. Because that's just something that, you know, we really don't see as ripe yet. Uh, but on the other hand, you absolutely run the risk that despite putting it in a file, despite putting it on one of the layers of the GIS, it gets missed. Nobody remembers it, um, then, then it doesn't happen. So that's, that's certainly a risk.
I know, I know Mr. Smith has brought this up on many, many applications, as a lot of applicants bring it up. You know, we're building the sidewalk to nowhere, but eventually these sidewalks have to start connecting. And I know we've seen it at churches, we've seen it on Main Street. I know you brought that up, Steve. Steve likes the sidewalks, and, and I think I do too. And I know I watch kids walking on, in the grass to school down 25, so I, I'd almost say we need to start building sidewalks.
If we put in a, require them to put in a sidewalk, that's easier to require the next people to do it too.
Right, cause you have to connect to the adjoining sidewalk.
If it's there, you gotta put yours in, but any argument, yeah, but I feel like it's better to go ahead.
Chick, Chick-fil-A got granted a waiver to not put in a sidewalk. Guess what happened when Panera Bread and Culvers came in?
They didn't want a sidewalk in.
They didn't have to put a sidewalk in because nobody else had put a sidewalk in.
If you, if you don't mind, I'll, I'll volunteer to put the sidewalks in.
Sounds good to me.
There you go.
I saw strike that.
There, there's a good man.
So I'll make a motion to approve PDP 2018-24, removing the, um...
Variants.
Ver, I know, yeah, the variants, thank you.
Denying the variants or something?
Uh, removing variants, the only variants, number one, and making a motion then to approve, thank you.
Second.
Uh, hold on. One, Michaela, is the sidewalk shown on the plat?
That was Googles.
Uh, it's, it's not shown on the plat.
Okay, cause I didn't see it.
I'm requesting a variance, so...
But it's preliminary.
It will have to be shown on the final.
Just making sure. Alright, we got a set, a motion by Mr. Solsky, a second by Mr. Wiseman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those pause, motion approved. You guys have to go, come sign your papers.
Leave a signature.
Our next item of business will be the open space standard public hearing continued, so we'll reopen the public hearing.
Yes, we can just reopen and then close it again.
Okay. And we'll close the public...
Or not close it, but continue it, sorry.
Yeah, continuing the public hearing. And for the record, who are we waiting on, and what are we waiting for, Matthew?
Um, I, I, I'd say for the most part, we're waiting on, on some of our workload issues. Obviously, this is a, this month we had, what, six applications. Next month, I think we have at least seven or eight applications. So on some, on some level, it is most, I think it is mostly on staff to try to find some additional time to get the research done that we would like to do and that you all have requested. I could tell, I could share with you that. I, I have been looking through the regs for some of the other cities.
If you have more work to be done, let's continue it and bring it back soon, as soon as you can, thank you.
Next item of business is the Cherry Blossom sidewalk waiver request.
Nope, next one up.
Oh, Edgewood is first, I'm sorry. I was trying to hold y'all till the end. Y'all just look like you're having so much fun. Mike's reminiscing back there and, uh... Sidewalk waiver request for Edgewood subdivision, no.
Does anybody else need a different version, is that in that?
No.
No, move first.
Yes, sir. Did you get one of these? No, this is, this is yours.
Go ahead. Who's got it?
I don't, you, you all honestly probably know more about this than I do. My understanding is that the applicant is here to seek some sort of ruling from, from the planning commission regarding where the sidewalks should be placed in Edgewater, or Edgewood, rather. I think from Monday's discussion, they have talked to the city of Stampin' Ground about this issue. And the city of Stampin' Ground seems to be okay with the sidewalk being placed on one side of the street and not on both. But as far as details greater than that, I think it might be easier if the applicant was to present it.
Thank you, Matt. Mike, you wanna come up?
Yeah, it's the plan that Ben put forward.
State your name.
Mike Brad.
And you weren't sworn in, you swear a firm?
I was.
He was.
Oh, did you? Alright, in that case, I'll write you that.
Officially sworn in for the record.
Alright, good.
I don't know if the plan that Ben put together for sidewalks on the interior portion is still under consideration, but I haven't seen it.
That's it right there.
That's it right there.
That's the one.
It's hard to see.
Truthfully, we're good either way, whichever way you want. But I can give you a little history on why this came about in the first place, if, if that hasn't been brought up in the workshop. But the original developer went bankrupt with his property. We bought the 20 lots that had been platted at a master commissioner sale, and we started building. There was a bond held by that developer for the finishing of the roads and for the sidewalks and a few other miscellaneous things. There's a failure in the road at the front, it's gonna need to be repaired. Ben estimates that at 20,000. He estimates the finished surface of the road at 26. The bond, I think, is $65,000, is that correct?
About, yeah, about.
Change. So there's not enough money to do the sidewalks on both sides in phase one. So this became the option to allow this to get done and not be in a situation where there are no sidewalks at all. Even though I think the residents out there might prefer no sidewalks, that this way we at least get sidewalks on the one side. Phase two, would, of course, we would become the developer in phase two, and then we would make sure that all that's done and bond just like normal.
So you, in phase two, you're talking about putting sidewalks on both sides, Mike?
No, no, it's gonna be this, this is gonna be phase two. But all the rest of it, things that we'd have to put up a letter of credit for, whatever.
Would you ever consider sidewalks on both sides? That comes up a lot.
Probably not.
Okay.
And I'll tell you why. And you can probably talk to some of the residents out there. The ditching system that was developed when they engineered this, it really makes sidewalks an ugly feature. Because you have a sidewalk and then falls off into a ditch. And then when you go to cross back to the street, you've got the falloff on both sides of the sidewalk into the ditch. And those ditches are substantial. The pipe requirements in some of the lots are 18 inches for a culvert pipe. And that makes a pretty big hole, and it's a pretty good drop off for, you know, a pedestrian or kid on a tricycle, you know? Right down in this ditch, it's too deep.
That's now, we hear a lot of complaints from residents that, you know, you're walking down one side of the street, and if you wanna stand on the sidewalk, you gotta cross the street and walk on that, and then, you know, we hear that a lot of times.
I'm with you, it's kind of a hassle going door to door, and, and Elkhorn Green is kinda tough because there are no sidewalks on one side.
Bradford's the same way.
I understand that.
I think the only, the only problem I have with this, Mike, is where, when you went to the city, it was on that other plan.
Yeah, they, they approved the other plan, this plan.
This is the one we got in the package, and that's the one I actually liked. We talked about it Monday, Mike. The one that was more on the outside and it went into the cul-de-sac. That's the one I think most of us liked Monday, and, but that, that, that is the one that probably has more issues with crossing ditches, isn't it?
Yeah, the way that some of that stuff is laid out.
Granage ditches, um, or either way.
Corner, adjuvant cornerstone, that's the big issue. The rest of it doesn't cross the ditch that much except for, well, it does, comes around the cul-de-sac and right back to the Edgewood.
And you're okay with this one?
I'm okay with either, to be honest.
The one thing we asked Brent to do was change the date on one or the other, just make sure that we get the right one done. Now, they were both dated March 21st, both Brent's and Ben's, so figure it out, we'll approve.
I don't know what Ben's thought process was on that, over this, but like I said, I was fine with either.
That's what I understood, that's what we understood on Monday, I think he said that.
That what?
That you didn't see the, the one.
But I am fine with either one, and I don't know what his reasons were.
I'd like to go with, and again, I own my glasses, but I think this is the original one we had in the packet that covers the cul-de-sac. I think we're okay with that.
How about March 21st? That sounds good.
Well, they're both dated March 21st.
I thought Brent changed the date on the second one.
Nah, I don't think, well, he will.
But if you're gonna go with the first, then that's the date for first.
Well, that, okay.
So just destroy the second one.
No, no. Uh, is that all you got, Mike?
That's all I've got, and you probably have some folks that might wanna speak on it.
Yeah, Mr. Kenley. So some of the sidewalk is on your property.
Yes.
Can you come up, can you come up?
One and two.
Can you come up here real quick?
Yeah, David Kenley, I live at Main Street Stampin' Ground, and on this plot here, I own plot one and two, as you come in there. Uh, I know in there are other subdivisions in Scott County that just have sidewalks on one side. Okay, he's saying that with the planning zoning is gonna, the bond money is gonna pay for all of this sidewalk?
Not enough bond money there.
Okay, like one and two, will the property across that pay for half of the sidewalk, you know, the people that have to put it in?
I'm glad you showed up, cause Charlie, that's what I've been saying all along, he need to be involved in this, but, I mean, how forcible can we make him put sidewalks on his two lots?
You did the same thing, you bought a couple of lots at, at auction, is that how you got them?
No, I bought them, uh, I was the first one to buy.
Oh, from the original, from Billy Martin and, and his bunch? I would say the city of Stampin' Ground might be able to, to make David do that. I don't see any way we can do that, no. Now, we have no jurisdiction over David at all. And, and by the way, were you, did you swear in a little while ago? Did you swear affirm what you're saying?
Yes, I did.
I, I've already signed you in. Uh, so no, you're, no, we could not force Dave. The only reason we've got any leverage over Mike is because he's finishing out the subdivision. Uh, and, you know, he wants to make sure it, it's okay, and, and we wanna match up what he's gonna do in the second phase. But no, someone who just, a lot buyer, no, we have no, no platter over him at all.
Okay, another thing, I would've put the sidewalks in day one when I bought it, but the ditch there is not in the, is not proper.
You're talking about where the spring's coming up, Mr. Kenley?
Yeah, the whole.
There's a, there's part of that bond.
I mean, my, if I put a sidewalk in right now, it's in the ditch.
That, that bond money, it, part of it's gonna be used to try to redo that bad area right there where that spring's coming out to make a new catch box and try to get that water on across the road like it should be.
If it was just cleaned out, it may help.
Yeah.
If there was a proper ditch put in there.
Okay. If that happens, are you okay with putting your sidewalks in then?
Well, what about, I'm gonna have to foot the whole bill.
To me, and you're a money man.
I was just getting ready to figure out the numbers. Let's say the cost is, Mike, you have any idea what sidewalk, uh, above and beyond what the bond won't cover it's gonna cost you personally, roughly?
Here, here's my opinion, I just, I just, I just think however lots that has developed at this, what'd you say, 20 lots, Mike? So there's $20,000 left, if you divide it between each lot, so that's a thousand dollars per lot, and that goes towards sidewalks.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, is if your cost, let's say it's 20,000, if it's above and beyond what the bond doesn't cover, so if your cost is 20 to do this whole sidewalk layout, then if there's 20 lots, I would say the cost to this gentleman would be a thousand per lot. Would you be about two grand? So it'd be a partial, you wouldn't have to pay for it all. Does that make sense, sir?
Two little catches to that, is I only own 17, he owns two, water company owns one, and another developer owns three.
Yeah, I forgot about that.
So everybody's gotta kick in, and I don't know if we could force that to happen.
I'd say then maybe they're percentage owned. If it's one lot and one lot's 5% of 20 lots, they need to flip 5% of the bill. They come up with my retention pond on Cherry Blossom, where it was a portion of the per, property owned was the expense of, of manicuring that retention pond. So I think it's kinda the same scenario. If you own two lots, and out of 20, you have 10% of the bill above and beyond what the bond doesn't cover, is that enforceable?
I was gonna say, but that, yours wasn't enforcement, that would've been homeowners association perhaps.
Well, mine was an enforcement issue, but I'm just, let's not talk about, then let's talk about that.
Mr. Kenley's, he's already stated that he's willing to help put the sidewalks in, but, you know, he wants to, if there's money to be shared, he wants his little share of money too, so it doesn't cost him out the butt to...
Another thing, if you go by lots, my two lots is bigger than four of these other ones in length.
At least it's not a corner lot.
That's so actually my math is to your advantage.
So shh.
Yeah, I understand.
But I mean, there's several lots like that. 20 lots, that's 5% of the bill each lot, per lot would cover, so if the, who owns three lots, they'd have about a 15% expense. Mr. McKinley, is that what I heard?
Kenley.
Kenley, he's got two lots, that'd be 10%, that'd be 10% of the cost over and above what the bond doesn't cover, and I think that'd be fair to everybody.
Yeah, cause the bond is gonna have some of, of that to pay.
So again, if the cost for the thing's a hundred thousand dollars, and I know that's way more, but what is gonna co, and, and it covers everything but 20 grand? Divide 20 grand among, amongst the 20 lots, and whatever the number is, the number is.
Mark, let me give you an example, I think meets what you're talking about. We had a subdivision out in the county. And by the time it got around to finishing, the road was in, the whole road, not a huge subdivision, thank goodness, but the whole road was in terrible shape. Uh, the bond was not particularly impressive. Uh, so in effect, to use what few funds we had, we literally sat down with the owners of the other lots and worked out a pro rata share. Now, we couldn't force them to do it, but of course, we couldn't do anything if we didn't have their agreement, because we weren't gonna be able to do the whole thing. Uh, and, and they all came through. That was bigger bucks than what we're talking here. Uh, but that's how that worked. We couldn't force them to do it because we didn't have subdivision plat approval, or I mean, we didn't have any of that kind of authority over them.
But didn't, and you use the word force, and I, I don't even know if that's even the right word. When he bought the lots, they were at an auction. That auction was the property that had been bonded for sidewalks and roads. So ultimately, he has his, his ownership of the bond money per se. So yes, we may not, I think, I don't wanna say the word's forced, but I think he's both entitled to the bond money, but he's both...
He, his property is entitled to be, to take a share of the bond money, yes.
But then he also...
But we can't, we had no contractual or, or other obligation from David that he's got to kick in. If the work is done, his lot's entitled to share in it, just like the ones Mike has, but we can't force them to kick in more. As I said, Mike's got the incentive, cause he's got a whole bunch of lots to sell, uh, so that's why even more so, but we can't force that. But in order to use our money, we need to have their participation, because otherwise, we're not gonna go out and, and take to the 10,000 over and above the street work and whatever else, and just waste it.
Mike, who are the other four lots you mentioned? Who, somebody owns three, and there's another one who owns one?
Yeah, BND Investments owns three, Georgetown Water owns one. Now, it depends on where the sidewalks fall. Now, it depends on where the sidewalks fall. If we do the one-sided sidewalk, how are you gonna convince a lot owner who doesn't have a sidewalk in their lot to pay him?
That's true too, yeah.
Which I think is solvable, because we do wanna do phase two, and I think the bond is, if we go with the original plan or with Ben's plan, I think the cost is somewhere in the twenty-five thousand dollar range, and I think we estimate nineteen thousand left in the bond.
So, six thousand dollars divided by twenty.
Six thousand bucks, and we split it up, and if it doesn't, everybody doesn't kick in, we'll cover that, because we wanna move on to phase two.
I think it'd look really nice with sidewalks throughout the whole thing. I hate to have one house with the sidewalk, one house without, one house with.
Are you talking about on both sides or?
No, no, just one side's fine. You know, I wouldn't do that to you, Mike.
I was gonna say, that's another twenty-five thousand dollars.
And David will whip us off, so that, yeah, that's what we're.
So, Mr. Kenley, you, you'll have your share of the bond money.
Another thing, the ditches will be a big problem. If the sidewalk is right, it's, it's deeper than those two steps there, right at the sidewalk.
Sidewalk would be, be underwater.
Well, they, they would.
Something when, when, you know, Ben and you guys and everybody is out there and, and literally designs what we're gonna do to fix all this. Uh, and, and Ben's got ideas. He's, he's told us at workshop, uh, and I can't imagine it's not going to include the ditches you're talking about. Uh, but that's something you guys really are gonna have to discuss onsite and come up with a design, a plan, the estimate of the costs, and see just what the various shares are gonna be. Uh, 'cause a lot of this, we can't simply do here, because, I mean, you gotta be out there, and the engineer's gotta be here. Uh, that's just, that's more detail than we're, we're able to do.
I mean, there's no more, more in the ditches. You have to use a weed eater, you know, if you gotta keep them cleaned out.
Yeah, well, clearly that needs to be fixed right along the street.
Mr. Chairman, what is our decision on this thing? It's supposed to be, I'm confused.
I think we just need to go ahead and vote on the sidewalk plan that Mike has brought, and then however the money falls out, it falls out. It'd be up to these guys with the other owner.
And I just did the math.
To sit down with Ben and work through how much is gonna be left on the bond, to figure out who's gonna have.
If Mike's figure is right, and there's nineteen thousand left, and it's gonna cost six grand, it's three hundred dollars a house for a side, per, per sidewalk. A lot, a lot. I'm sorry, thanks. Three hundred dollars, a lot. Like I said, he'll make it happen. I make a motion, we approve the original plan that you brought. Oh, you got a couple of questions. Go ahead, sorry. Jim?
Is this, this is the original plan?
No, that's Ben's plan. This is David's plan.
Two, two different.
Can y'all scoot over there real quick?
Let the gentleman speak.
Oh, and, and your name, sir?
David Gillespie, uh, one oh eight cornerstone.
You swear affirm?
I do.
Thank you.
Hey, David, what's, show them which ha, which one is your house?
It is.
Which lot it is?
Oh, gosh.
Six?
Uh, seven. Yes. Um, unfortunately, I didn't know the exact, where the sidewalks were gonna go originally. Um, I was just told it was gonna go around the outside edge, so I was kinda concerned about the drainage, uh, from eight, two, three. And of course, you know, back all the way to one. But, um, it's, I, if, if this is the one you, you guys are voting on, then I'm, right.
The one I think we're leaning on would have sidewalks on your lot.
On the outside edge?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, then, I'm leaning towards all, both sides having sidewalks. I'm all for sidewalks. I mean, I have a four-year-old little girl. My neighbor has a three-year-old little boy, so.
Most people do want sidewalks on both. Unfortunately, the money's not there, and that's pre, the previous developer, not Mr. Bradley.
Right.
That there's, wasn't enough bond money put up, and it's something I think we see here in the county and the city. A lot is, the developers and builders don't generally put sidewalks on both. I'm with you. I've got a little one. My youngest one is now eleven. I'd love more sidewalks than Mary or, for people to walk their kids, their dogs. Unfortunately, in this, yeah, themselves. Unfortunately, in this situation, there's about twenty, almost thirty thousand dollars short. So, we'll at least get sidewalks on one side, which I think will be nice. And then, Mike, are you looking at the development of the next property, maybe sidewalks on both sides? Or probably just one?
Phase three?
Phase, yeah, three.
Probably. I mean, we, whatever the current requirements are then, because I don't think we even have a concept plan on three yet, since we added that property.
So, unfortunately, 'cause of money, it'll only be one side at this point, and I'm happy to get that, 'cause initially, we were struggling, maybe not even having sidewalks, so.
Either, either or. But, uh, the, the thing that's getting me is, uh, you know, we have a homeowners association out there. Uh, to my understanding, anybody that has a sidewalk in front of their property is required to maintain and maintenance of the sidewalk to keep it clear in cases of, you know, trips or snow, trips or slips, right? So, uh, how's that falling? Only fifty percent of us have to deal with this?
Cleaning the sidewalk, correct.
Okay, I mean, there's, there's no way around that. I mean, that is just, it is what it is.
What about cracks? Cracks and unsup?
You'll have to, you'll have to come up there first, but.
Matthew Hayfley, I live at one oh six.
Oh, sorry. Matthew who?
Hayfley, H A F L E Y.
Do you swear affirm?
I swear.
Thank you.
So, what about, 'cause I know my grandparents has it and likes it. If they get, sidewalk gets cracked, they gotta fix it. So, if you're walking sidewalk and it's settled down, I'm like David, why would we have to pay fifty percent and the other side doesn't? The homeowner association should pay that, or?
Charlie, wouldn't HOA normally cover a sidewalk if they're on an HOA?
It, it, that, that is dependent upon basically what's there. I mean, there are places in, in Georgetown, for example, the sidewalks are on public property. There are places where the sidewalk is on, uh, on the private property.
So, you probably wanna look at the rules of your HOA, 'cause if you're lucky.
It doesn't stay.
And it was probably devised in anticipation of having sidewalks everywhere. The problem is, that was back before we had a time limit. We had a percentage limit, uh, and it took so much longer. The prices went up, and now the bond money is not adequate. It would've been adequate if it had all been built out in the first couple of years, but it's been a whole lot longer than that. Uh, so, I'm sure the HOA anticipates everybody having them, but that's just not gonna happen unless the homeowners come up with.
It is kinda a liability to have a sidewalk less than two feet away from a drainage ditch, also having people, I mean, there's a lot of traffic that's coming in and out there, construction vehicles or people looking to buy properties. So, uh, I mean, having sidewalks on both sides, I think, would probably be the best bet, even if we have to raise our HOA. I'd rather be safe than sorry.
And, and that's certainly something, if the homeowners agree to it, that's something that the HOA could accomplish.
Right.
It's just that's not something we can accomplish, because the bond just simply doesn't cover it.
The money's, yeah, the money's not there.
And just a quick note, the HOA will have no responsibilities for maintaining sidewalks or streets, clear, no, nothing, and most don't. They, the city, I think, there are.
Just a set of restrictions, isn't it?
Yeah.
Or what, what you cannot.
The fee is fifty bucks, so altogether, the first phase is gonna raise, you know, a thousand dollars a year. Don't pay for mowing.
So, who's to say if we don't have sidewalks in general? I mean, it is a small neighborhood, and, I mean, given the circumstances.
The sidewalks were on, uh, was on the plan to begin with, right?
Yes.
So, actually, it showed sidewalks on both sides, right?
But there wasn't money to cover.
But now, there's not money to cover it, so to be able to complete the project.
I mean, that's not really our fault for a homeowner. We buy them properties at a lot that's already zoned out for sidewalks.
So, you will, the good news is you'll have a sidewalk. Depending on how some people look at it, good news, they won't have a sidewalk, or some people will be upset they won't have a sidewalk. I think it'll be, you know, like you said, to your point, you're excited, you're happy to have a sidewalk, 'cause you've got kids.
Right.
So, I guess that's good news for you.
If I have on both sides, I mean, given the circumstances that, you know, fifty-fifty, fair shocker, right?
Unfortunately, I don't think there's many subdivisions in town, even in Georgetown, to have sidewalks on both sides.
There's a number of them that don't have them at all.
I was gonna say, I'm in Bradford. We have them on one side. We looked at Alcorn Green. They only have them on one side. We moved here.
Parts of Payne's Landing don't have them.
Payne's Landing don't have them.
Wouldn't we both not have them?
The city of Stampin' Ground doesn't have it on both sides.
Right, exactly, so.
There's, there's not one in front of your house, is there, David?
I'll be honest, if I think, if I had it my way, I agree with you, sir. I'd love to have them on both sides everywhere. In this situation, unfortunately, the money's only there for one.
Well, if, if we are, are changing the original plans that had sidewalks on both sides down to just one side, why can't we change it down to having none?
We could, but then.
What's he doing, bringing logic into the mix?
You know what, Charlie, my argument there is gonna be the exact argument I had on the subdivision in Kane Run when we approved them with no sidewalks and had women here. And I'm gonna be more vocal this time. They said, there's kids that are walking the school buses, and there's not a sidewalk to walk on them, and the developer said, well, they can walk on the edge of the street. I'm gonna say right now, absolutely not. I will not approve no sidewalks at all.
So, you're saying it's all right for half of this subdivision to walk in the street?
I know they gotta cross. They, unfortunately, they have to, they'll have one sidewalk to walk on, but one's better than none. You know, I can't see not having sidewalks, sorry.
Hey, could, could I ask one, one question, Mr. Chairman? We keep talking about how we expect the street repairs to be so much and something else to be so much and to have a certain amount or an approximate amount left for sidewalks. Once they start digging down there and they find all, you know, where the water damage and all that is, I mean, we may not have much of anything left for sidewalks. Do we really need to make the decision now before we actually fix the street and fix the things that have to be, and, and then the final surface? Because we, I mean, literally, we may have nothing left by the time, 'cause once you get into water damage to the subsurface of the street, I mean, that, that could be some difficult stuff.
Sounds like Mr. Bradley's willing to take that risk.
I, I don't have a problem with that. Ben does. He won't sign off on phase two, which we're conflicted.
So, you can't proceed without, all right, never mind, I understand. Yeah, I understand.
Until he gets, you know, some kinda something from this.
All right, in that case, may I make a different suggestion? In, in that case, approve whichever one, uh, 'cause again, there's no money for two. There may not be no money for one. Uh, go ahead and approve it, so he's got a plan, they can actually get started on this. But keep in mind that we'll, we may in fact have to review the thing, once they get the two major pieces of construction done, because there may be nothing left for sidewalks at all.
Mr. Bradley, if that is an issue, and there is no, uh, money for sidewalks, are you still okay flipping the bill for the sidewalks?
Oh, no, no, you just went outside of way, what we.
Well, no, that's what I'm asking. I, I, 'cause that's gonna be, that could come up.
You know, with that twenty-five thousand dollar difference, I think it's a more lightweight C would be a better solution.
Okay, well, that's what I'm asking, 'cause.
Yeah, I mean, that's, this lot, this plan.
Why can't we do this plan, since you know the corner house, mine, David's, and the one next to us?
Hey, can I make a suggestion? I, I wanna make a suggestion.
They're, now you're just shifting the, to another property owner, but you're not considering that these people have two sidewalks to maintain.
Hey, Mike, could y'all talk to us up here, please? Hey, let's just make a suggestion. You guys need to get together in the subdivision. The homeowners association with Mike and try to get something settled as far as the sidewalks. Now, now, here's the other part. We're not the only board that has a say-so on this sub, on these sidewalks. City Stampin' Ground has a say-so on these sidewalks. And from what I remember at the meeting at the city stamp ground, they said they wanted sidewalks. They didn't have, they didn't even leave an option out for no sidewalks at all.
Well, they never had sidewalks coming all the way down to his.
Oh, I agree. I, I agree, Missy, and that's, I agree wholeheartedly, but I'm just saying, we're not, it is, it is, it's definite mess, but I, I'm just saying. I think that everybody just needs to come in agreement. We do what Charlie said, try to get the drainage issue fixed first, get the streets on, see how much money's left. 'Cause I still don't feel like we can ever push you into putting sidewalks in to begin with.
Well, Ben's doing his best.
You bought the lot, you didn't buy the whole subdivision.
I mean, I'll be honest with you, because phase two is held up now because of the sidewalks. So, that's what we're trying to address.
I agree.
I don't have a preference to these plans at all. I could go either way. But just like you don't want it on your side to maintain it, and the person across from you not, they don't want the same thing either, so. Everybody out there knew when they bought their lots that they were gonna have a sidewalk there, so the fact that the neighbor doesn't have one doesn't affect them in the least. So, that's kinda my opinion on that. As far as the city having a say, I don't think they do, actually. I'm sure you all would love their opinion, but they don't have a legal say.
Well, they don't have a veto. No, that, that's true. They don't have a veto.
The city of Stampin' Ground doesn't have a say whether it gets sidewalked. Then why didn't we go to Stampin' Ground?
Well, because we wanted their input. That, that's all. We, we didn't wanna do something that they're gonna be wildly opposed to. Uh, so, they were just, they were just asked for input, and, and they, and they gave input, and, and I assume we would try that.
They're gonna throw us the same question. Sidewalks don't get put in. They're gonna say, why did we ever make a decision on somebody making, putting sidewalks in?
Because they were shown the courtesy of having input. All this required is the ordinance.
It wasn't presented that way, Charlie.
Well, and, and, and I'm sure you can convince.
I'm just saying, it wasn't presented that way to the city.
But because what, what, the, the say-so that they've got is just like the say-so we've got. They approved an ordinance, we've approved an ordinance, county, everybody's approved the ordinance, and they have to comply with the ordinance. Unfortunately, the original developer went under. It took too long. The bond no longer satisfied, so now it's up to us to make whatever's left work as best we can, which may in fact have one side sidewalks, and it may ultimately show, you know, no sidewalks at all in the first phase.
But wasn't the original plan then to approve sidewalks on both sides?
Yes.
So, then we are in fact compromising by saying we want sidewalks on one side.
But that's what we do. That's not what the city does. They, they approved the ordinances. We, we then have to do the administration. So, that, that's why all I'm saying is, is so they can proceed, approve one, but I think everybody needs to keep in mind, or even make it possibly a condition, to then come back after the road's done and the water damage is done, and then we can see what is left. Because ultimately, excuse me, ultimately, I'm not sure there's any real guarantee there's gonna be a dime left, 'cause that, that work is expensive. And it may well be that we end up, our compromise goes a step further, and there are none in, you know, whatever's covered by the bond. But that gets Ben off. At least you get started. Uh, but if there's no money there, then it's gonna have to be only you guys, because there's, you know, all we can do is the bond.
But it would be up to the, to Mike and homeowners association, Mr. Kenley and the other guy, to take care of sidewalks if they want sidewalks, right?
Yes.
No, no, forcing them.
Not if there's, if there's no money there, no.
Yeah, but, I mean, I'd be up to them. If they wanna do it, they can do it. If they don't, they don't. That's the way I look at it.
My personal opinion is that you got a better product if you have at least a sidewalk on one side.
I agree.
I don't, I don't think you're gonna have a good product with no sidewalks.
Well, I'm not pushing you for no sidewalks. That, that wasn't my plan. I, and I'll take either one of these plans. And we can do it like Charlie says. Once we determine what the actual costs of repairing that spring that goes under the road is, and then determine how much money's left, we come back here and discuss it again and figure out how we're doing the sidewalks.
If there are less ditches on, on this plan that has sidewalks on the inside of the loop instead of on the outside, I would go for that one.
There's, there's ditch every single, every single spot.
Makes no difference.
There, there's nothing about that that's gonna be using sidewalks.
Like on the corner of Edgewood and Cornerstone, there's this giant rock drainage thing that we're gonna have to actually get her to allow us to cross her property, because there's no way to fit a sidewalk in there.
Does that look difficult?
Well, here's, here's what Mike said. Mike needs a motion.
It should be. This is where the roads fall.
Mike kinda needs to, needs us to give some kind of recommendation, so he can get started on phase two, because this whole thing is holding up phase two.
And I'd like to make a motion tonight, if y'all are done. You done?
Why didn't you give us that?
I was trying, everybody, I'll make a motion to go with the original plans, which were Mike's, dated three twenty-one, which really looked like the sidewalks are on the outside, which would help with some children there, uh, and, and get that, make the motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Solsky.
A second.
To go with the original sidewalk plan that was presented by Mr. Bradley in March.
A second.
Second by Mrs. Mizell. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
Mr. Miffler is a nay.
On top of that, I wish you much luck.
All my tests are loaded all.
On the face two.
Motion passed. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Good, thank you.
Next.
Cherry Blossom.
Cherry Blossom sidewalks.
We got about five minutes.
We need that to have been prevented by Sunset.
The only person sitting here is Glenn.
No, they built it out.
Yeah.
Yeah, they actually built it out. I mean, they built the road.
You got five minutes, man.
All right. Uh, I, I know a little bit about this, uh, application. Uh, once again, I'm sure the, the applicant can, uh, fill in the rest of the details. Um, the issue here i- is in Cherry Blossom, uh, and it really involves this property that I've outlined in purple here on Clubhouse Drive. Um, my understanding is that the, this property has sort of a, an equine use to it presently, uh, and is, as yet, uh, not a part of, or not, not been subdivided for residential use, uh, and that the applicant is, uh, sort of seeking a, a waiver uh, to not have to install sidewalks along the frontage of this property. Um, the applicant did submit, if I can get the slides. Um, the applicant did submit some photos of the street showing that side of the, the property. Uh, you can see them here, and you can kind of scroll through those slowly. So this, this is the side of the property. There are platted lots on the other side, and there is sidewalk on the other side of the street. You can kind of see it there to the left. Um, you know, so there is sidewalk on one side, the other side doesn't have sidewalk. Uh, there are, however, if you could, uh, actually go ahead one slide, sorry. Um, so you can see on, what's, I guess, sort of the south side of this plat that, that's on the screen here, um, the platted lots, and there are sidewalks along those lots. There are also some, there are four platted lots on the north side. I think only one of those has a house right now. Is that correct? I don't, yes, okay, yeah. Uh, one of those has a house, the others could in future have houses. Um, and then the other thing I wanted to point out on the plat, uh, before I, I let the applicants really go into detail is that, uh, to me, um, to me, the equine use seems to have been taken into consideration when this plat was done. Um, if you look at street section AA that I included here on the bottom, which you'll note on the plat, is, is the cross-section for the street in question. Um, and you look at the right-of-way, especially the outsides of the right-of-way, um, on the left-hand side is, is the, the sidewalk placement for the side of the street and that runs along the, you know, the, the equine property. And then the right-hand side is, is for the lots on the other side. And as you can tell from this, uh, cross-section, the sidewalk has been shifted away from the equine use already. So I think that there has been some consideration made there, uh, for the fact that there are, you know, horses being ridden on that property. I don't know for sure if that's, you know, adequate for the, the safety of the horses or not, but I did want to point out that, you know, there, at some point in the planning process, even though I couldn't find a note in a staff report or anything specifically addressing this, um, that there was some consideration given. Um, staff, uh, obviously, you know, feels as though that sidewalks on both sides of the street are appropriate, you know, especially considering that there are those four platted lots sort of in the middle uh, of that, of that area. Um, the, the sidewalks along the front of those four lots, you know, isn't, isn't of much use unless they actually connect to the rest of the neighborhood. Um, but I can let the applicants take over, and obviously, I'm sure they have their, their own justification.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Glenn Hoskins from Lexington. I'm, I'm a lawyer without my lawyer uniform on tonight, but I'm here representing the developer, Cherry Blossom Development Company, and Miriam Sekan, who is the, she's married, she's one of the members of our LLC. She also is the, is the horse lady that has the horse pasture back there, and a very, very, uh, passionate horse woman, I might add. Those are her, her, her horses back there. Uh, when this was originally developed back in the late nineteen nineties, our whole theme of Cherry Blossom Village with the master plan was this, at some point in the time, this would be, uh, developed as, as a single-family residential lot, just like the rest of the subdivision has been. You know, we're doing it on a incremental basis, based upon demand and phases and units at different times. So that's when this plat was, uh, was drawn up. At some point, it was envisioned that when the timing was right, that that would be subdivided into residential lots. And that's probably why the sidewalk was put on the cross-section plats. Well, as it turned out, Ms. Sekan loves her horses and her house good, and it's made sense just to keep it a beautiful horse pasture. And, and you don't have any pictures to see here. Uh, we had one at the work session the other day of some jumping, uh, standards and all that kind of stuff. It's a pretty neat little thing. And, and the neighbors that live across the street love it. They can say they're, they're looking at a horse farm when they look out their front window. But there, there are a reason for coming today, and I didn't know this was gonna be National Sidewalk Day, believe me. I signed up for this. But, uh, uh, number one, uh, the, the expense of putting in sidewalks now, when at some point down the road, we are gonna subdivide that into lots and, uh, have to bring the bulldozers in, the concrete trucks on. Every one of those sidewalks will be torn to, you know what, and we'll have to come back and redo them all. So that's a twenty-five thousand dollar expense we can just be throwing away. Second of all is, uh, uh, if we did have sidewalks along the fences where the horses are, sidewalks bring kids with roller skates and roller blades and all that kind of stuff, and that's not a good combination with, uh, two thousand pound horses right on the other side. Uh, it's not good for the safety of the kids, safety of horses, or when you have, uh, people out jumping their horses on those jumpers that are out there in the field. It's not good for the riders either from a health standpoint. So those are our, our two main, uh, justifications for asking this. Now, let me emphasize that after sitting through these other sidewalk cases, we're not asking that we not have to put sidewalks in. At some point, we're gonna develop that for single-family housing. We absolutely will want to and will be required by, by the, the planning staff, put sidewalks in. So we're not asking that we be exempted for, forever and ever. We're just asking basically that the requirement to put sidewalks and be deferred until tho- till that horse pasture property becomes developed for single-family lots, if that makes it any easier for you.
So is there one barn and one house on the property currently?
Uh, there's a old farm, there's a little house there that's sort of a manager's house, and then there's a little, I wouldn't even call it a barn. It's more of a big stable, I guess. It's where she keeps her horses and feeds them, and if it rains or storms, they go in there. Uh, it's not a very big barn, though. It's right up on the front of Clubhouse Drive. So with that, I'll, I'll sit down and be glad to answer your questions you might have.
You didn't happen to bring us pictures like we asked you, did you?
Uh, that's what, you asked for an overhead.
Oh, just, okay.
Yeah, Brett was nice enough to, to do that, and, uh, we hope that that, that, that shows you what we're talking about. The, uh, what you wanted to see was the, the other side of Clubhouse Drive, to see that it did have a sidewalk on one side of Clubhouse Drive, which it definitely does.
I'm looking at the exact same picture on, on Google Maps, and I see the one house there right in front of the big barn. That's got a sidewalk. Those other three lots aren't developed, so there's no sidewalks there, which makes sense.
Actually, there is sidewalk there, ma'am.
Oh, Maple, this is an old picture then on Google Maps as well.
Did they just install those sidewalks?
So are there houses on those three lots?
No, but, uh, I mean, yeah, for sort of marketing.
Oh, yeah, yeah, he's talking, the three lots.
As is the case when, when I was with the planning commissioner, there's this ongoing thing of, uh, trying to get subdivisions up to snuff as far as completing streets and completing sidewalks. And so Cherry Blossom has fall, fallen into that category. The bond was called, and, and so sidewalks are being installed on even all the vacant lots.
So that house on the very top there, Clubhouse on the left-hand side or the upper side of the screen, that house in this picture has sidewalks plus those three lots?
That's correct.
Okay. And then from those four houses or four lots down, there's no sidewalks, which would be in front of the farm. Up until you get to that corner, which I guess would be almost near the bottom of the screen, you see the houses on left-hand side start. I wish I had the pointer I point.
Yeah, at the bottom.
Yeah, at the bottom there is when it looks like based, uh, yeah, right there is where the sidewalks start, and then they go clear.
Sidewalk coming up here stops here.
Right, right, so.
So there's no sidewalk from here to here.
And that's what you're wanting to maintain, no sidewalks there?
Not, not, not even have to do them, just defer it until.
If it stays a horse farm, there's no sidewalks, if you develop it, we're gonna ask for sidewalks.
If, if I might ask a question, uh.
You got two minutes.
Because if you look at the plat that they just put up there, the only platted lots are on sidewalks. Where we've, we don't usually require sidewalks where we don't plant lots.
I agree.
And this is gonna be planted at some place, because one of the concerns that was raised a, a month or so ago was, well, what if we don't think to require them later? We're gonna have a bank of platted lots later.
Are we having this discussion because the bond was called and we need to get rid of this money?
No.
So why are we having this discussion?
No, the, the, well, I guess the discussion came up because somebody said, yes, you have to put sidewalks all the way down, and that didn't make sense to me.
Came to the developer and said, you need to go ahead and stand the sidewalk across.
And so, at least my first awareness of it was that, and I got a call, why are we putting sidewalks where we don't have lots? And I said, I don't know why you would. So I suggested to Joe that we bring this up to a workshop. My court ran long, so I wasn't there to be part of the discussion, and you all discussed it. Uh, and then I talked to Joe later and said, well, can we do it again? Uh, and Glenn also asked that we could look at it again, and that was this past Monday. Because it seems, this is not one of those things like you raised earlier, Mark, that it may be forgotten, because they've gotta come back and actually do a plan. They gotta be here. Uh, there's right now a farm, and we don't require sidewalks for farms.
I'll make a motion, and we don't require to put any sidewalks in.
Good, because it's supper time. That's an excellent motion.
I, I, I'm, I'm not opposed to having a motion saying that. I, I just wanted to point out, uh, one of the issues potentially might just be that, uh, or one of the things requiring might be that, um, if the, if the developer's looking to dedicate this road to the city. I don't know if it has been, Brent, do you know, has, has this one been dedicated yet?
Well, his idea is to ask just as soon as the sidewalk is issued, some of them.
Okay, so that, that's probably really what triggered it, is, you know, by our, because they have a platted road typically, or a lot of, I mean, as you can see in the cross-section when they planned that road, that road was going to have sidewalks. And so they, they either need to have the sidewalk there, or they need your say-so that's okay for them to not.
So if we make the motion not to put the sidewalks in, then they can dedicate the road?
Well, if the city, I mean, because the city may say, you know, no, we don't like that, but if so, then we can readdress it. But those are not.
I thought the city didn't have no say-so in the sidewalks. That's just what you're telling me about.
No, 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 they're taking dedication of the street. They're taking dedication of the street. If they raise cane, we can say something. But no, it's not, we have not planted that. There should never be a question to them either. I'm just saying, we may hear, catch some hell over it, we'll need to talk about it. Until we plat the thing, we should never do that. Period. Period.
I agree. Until they plat it, I mean.
Oh, now.
Definitely.
You got a, you got a motion. Anybody second?
But how does the city, how does the city accept?
No, if, no, if, if, first off, they can. They can raise the question, they can't refuse, because once something's built according to plan, it's done. Now, Matt looked at it and said, he thinks maybe that sidewalk goes all the way down. I look at it and say, no, it doesn't. That's for, in front of the houses that we planted. So that may be a discussion. We may have to argue about that a little bit. Uh, but once it's done according to our plan, and this motion helps interpret what our plan is, law says they take it. County has discretion, city does not. So once it's done, it's inspected, it's according to plan, it's theirs, whether they really care for it or not.
Getting off topic, but how's that fall back on Stampground? Don't they have to say the sidewalks have to be in for, they accept those streets?
Well, that's different simply because there's money involved, and we can't force people who bought lots down the road, you know, that, that, that's.
Those aren't platted lots. You have a motion and a second. You have a motion and a second.
By who?
My, me, I motion, and Mr. Mifflin's second.
What's your motion?
To, uh, not, uh, make, uh, the applicant, uh, put in sidewalks.
Basically, you're.
Until the property is developed.
Until the plot are planted.
You are basically, uh, consenting to our request for the waiver.
Correct.
Or interpretation.
Well, the motion by Mr. Solsky, a second by Mr. Mifflin. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Got hungry.
Now it's it supper time?
It is supper time.
Mr. Weisman left there in a meeting just for the record, and Mr. Colwell was not present, so.
Yes, I'm six.
No, sir.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Done with sidewalk night.
I didn't realize Frank left. I didn't see him even get in.
That's an extra one.
I bet he was. I was done about.